All right, I'll go ahead and call the July 21st, 2021 Finance Committee meeting to order. Tonight, we have one main item and then other items be determined by committee chairman. So I may add a question about our vouchers to our agenda tonight after we've discussed Resolution Number 10. So Resolution Number 10 is to approving Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors contract for our accounting services as was introduced to our last meeting. Counselor Chavis and myself sponsored this. Counselor Chavis, do you want to give some background regarding that? And we do have Susan Reed with Baker Tilly on the meeting with us tonight.
Okay, Susan, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
My pleasure.
As you all are aware, we're in a transition from one controller, Controller Fenwick, our outgoing controller, to a new controller. You know, over the past, I'd say, year or so anyway, we wanted to take a look at, you know, sort of how we have been involved in our budgeting process, so this was part of it. And since we have sort of a transition in the controller's office, we thought the timing would be great to bring in another set of eyes to help us, you know, identify opportunities, to, you know, review things in a different way, maybe to review some of our policies to make sure that some of the extra dollars that we're getting as a result of the pandemic through like the rescue funds are being utilized as designed. And I am really putting a Reader's Digest version on this, but the information is in the resolution and I'm sure Susan can add and Chris can add as well. But we have had a relationship in the past with what was formerly Umba and very respected firm. And so I think that this will be a very good use of our council resources to have them sort of there in an advisory role for us. And Sean, if you had anything else to add, or Chris, or Susan, that I have missed, please go ahead and do so.
No, thank you, Counselor Chavis. That's a great summation. And I think you really hit the nail on the head. There's a lot of pieces that we could probably review and take a look at. Of course, Lawrence is growing, we have grown. And so just to make sure we're counting and taking, you know, utilizing the services and the accounting practices that similar sized cities, even though we're in Marion County, we are a Class II city and independent of the rest of the county. So we want to make sure we're utilizing all of the tools available to us. Susan, would you have anything to add or like to kind of give your, your sales idea or your, I don't want to say sales pitch, but you know, your elevator speech about Baker Tilly?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to talk with you about these services. So Baker Tilly provides budget reviews for a number of municipalities across the state and the partner with whom you would work specifically is probably meeting tonight right now with similar communities. She couldn't be on, but I work with her quite a bit as well. So Paige Stanson, you know, is really known for reviewing budgets, for helping municipalities really look at their funds to make sure that you're maximizing what opportunities there may be, you know, for bringing more revenues really, you know, into the funds where you want them and really how they mirror your needs. So, you know, she's objective, she's going to look at your numbers and give you ideas, but that would be, you know, the role that we would play. If there are other things that, you know, that you decide that you would like for us to provide insight into such as the ARP money that's going to be available, that's something, you know, we also can certainly help with. We're working again with a number of communities really on that too. So we appreciate the opportunity. It's been awesome since we've gotten to work with the city and we welcome the idea to do that.
Susan, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I live right by the city actually too. I'm in the township and not in the city, right there.
Well, we still accept you and are proud to have you here in the community with us. So I would like to open it up then to discussion. Counselor Chevlot or Counselor Giles, what thoughts or questions do you have regarding Resolution Number 10?
I have just two.
Okay.
The first is, the City of Lawrence has used Umba, well, no, Baker Tilly, but in a number of different capacities. And so when we engage as a council, and I'm sure that this has been vetted out, but can you have, can you have two clients simultaneously that one is on the administration side and one is on the council? Is that create a conflict somehow?
So we would do a conflict of interest to vet out whether there in fact is a conflict of interest, which we have done. I don't believe we have any active engagements with the city at this point, so you would be the sole client that we would have. So there isn't a conflict of interest because there's no active engagement with the city itself outside of the one that we're proposing.
Yeah, that, thank you. I know that there's been some talk about the possibility of engaging to do a rate study and to do some refinancing of some existing bonds. And so I guess maybe that's where I was going is in calendar year 22, but again, this, I guess this agreement only goes until the end of this year, '21, is that right? Is it for that period of time?
Yeah, I mean, it's specifically to review.
Yeah.
In preparation for this budget.
Okay.
Now, it does allow for you to ask for additional services, but I wouldn't say that that would be a conflict of interest in my opinion, where, you know, without, we would want to bet that it was a firm, but really what we're looking at are your city side funds.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're not looking at any of your utilities as a part of these services and the utility services really wouldn't, there's not an inherent conflict of interest. We do that in a number of municipalities where we do really work with all kinds of different units within that particular municipality. So we may do redevelopment work and city work and, yeah, not unusual.
And then the second question.
I'm sorry, Tom, I just wanted to let the committee know in response to the part about the bonds, Susan's not going to talk herself up, but Susan is a former bond attorney from Ice Miller. So she's got a lot of expertise and history in that area as well, and I just wanted you all to know that. I didn't mean to interrupt.
All right. Second question is, historically, particularly with this council and the previous council, the budget process, the administration delivers to the council their proposed budget and we all now have the timeline. So can you maybe expound a little bit upon the role in which, you kind of touched on it, on helping the council identify some of those revenue areas and being able to perhaps put money in different buckets and how that's going to work with the administration's presentation to the council on that budget?
Yeah, I was going to try, would it be possible to share my screen? It's disabled.
Yeah, I think, from a public meeting law, I mean, that'd be possible. It's okay. I think the admin's on and he's, he just did it, he says in the chat.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. I'm just going to kind of show you this one. So, you know, when you are budgeting, and I also am going to tell you that this is Paige's wheelhouse, but she certainly could explain upon what I'm showing you. You can see the proposal, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So when you look at what we would do, we would certainly want to engage, you know, the controller's office when helping, helping support the budgeting process. You know, there are revenues expenditures, reserves, those are all pieces that we help with that analysis. And you're not only looking at the city's historic, historic information, but really taking into account, thanks for the DLGF, and what we know about circuit breaker impacts. And so how you performed in prior years with what you thought you were going to budget to make sure that doesn't really met well. There's different budgeting strategies and that's one of the things that Paige would work with me to look at here in practice. And then she would gather information and build these cash flow models that give you some options to look at, look at the ways to maximize, you know, your budget for not only the next budgeting year, but really looking ahead, the forecast out through 2023. And then the report itself really identifies major operating funds and then looks to make sure that there aren't other funds that could be utilized more effectively, you know, to achieve your goal by incorporating some of these funds. But these are the major operating funds that she would do in that cash flow modeling. So it's, you know, also just with her background, she's sort of an expert in your core to identify, you know, really two address questions you may have. And, you know, my understanding is that you're losing a trusted advisor, you know, and that they're staying in control or maybe he has already left. I think he did, has already left, right?
Correct.
And so, you know, that's just kind of that opportunity to have somebody who really understands budgets. You know, really, her job is going to be helping you achieve what you want through that budgeting process and looking for those opportunities that exist to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Sorry, I talked a little bit, I, Chris didn't share that, but I also, yeah, I also can expand a little bit more than you might have wanted, sorry.
Oh, you were perfect, thank you. No, that was absolutely perfect.
I appreciate it.
Do you have any comments you'd like to add?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Counselor Chavis, do you have any? I don't have any additional comments. Do you have anything additional?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Or motion to recommend, motion to recommend the resolution to full council.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to recommend and a second. I'll now do a roll call vote. Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis? Counselor Chevlot?
Yes.
Counselor Denny?
Yes.
So the recommendation passes unanimous four to zero. Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Reed, Susan, for coming and presenting to us tonight. What we'll do next, if, I don't know if you're able to hang around or not, but what we'll do next is provide the recommendation to the full council. If not, that's okay, we'll speak for you and then from there, the official vote will go at 6:30.
I'm fine, I can hang around for a while if you'd like, yeah.
Yeah, it's, full council meeting is not till 6:30, Susan, I know it's the dinner hour. It is the same Zoom link. If you want to pop off and come back in 45 minutes too, if that's okay with the committee, that's fine as well.
I may do that, yeah, that sounds lovely, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'll be nice, sir. Thank you. Bye.
And then, so thank you, everybody, for that conversation. Other items to be determined by committee chairman, so real quick.
Sean, you've got Resolution 11 as well on the collective bargaining agreement for the firefighters.
I do.
Do you not? Or is that not, oh, nevermind, I'm sorry.
It's on the agenda.
I told you I didn't have it together, my apologies.
No problem.
All right, other items to be determined by committee chairman. Thank you, Chris, actually, for jumping in that way. It's better to try to keep me on point than to not say anything. Just, so as you know, all four of us, I had had some questions that we had all collected together and I'd sent to the controller regarding some of the vouchers that we had before us. And part of my sort of edification process here recently has been learning about a, anything over $25,000 that the council is supposed to have approved and taken a look at. So there was a couple vouchers that we had sent that the total does come to over $25,000 at this point. And before we made that, you know, the voucher conversation made its way to the full council, I thought we could take this moment and discuss those vouchers and maybe get some input as to what we might want to do during the full committee hearing. So one of the main one, one of them has to do with Ice. Did everybody, first of all, get the questions and the responses?
Yep.
I'm able to read it, okay. So let me, Ice Miller was one of them and the total on the vouchers, if we paid the claims this, this week would be $33,000. I'm going to take a step back though, real quick. I know everybody shook their head and understood what that was. Should I provide a quick background on what the resolution is that I'm discussing, the ordinance, to help out with that? So I got one head shake yes and one no, but I, so I'll do it just real quick here. Basically, it was passed originally in 2014 and then amended then in 2016. And it was a resolution of the common council concerning $25,000 threshold in Lawrence code. It says, whereas all such professional services contract must also be approved by the Board of Public Works and Safety prior to the council's consent, and whereas recently the council discovered that certain professional service contracts which will exceed $25,000 per year over a 12-month period were executed, commenced and monthly payments had been paid without first receiving approval of the Board of Public Works and Safety and the council. And whereas these contracts, although drafted for payments to be made on a monthly basis in the aggregate were intended to exceed the $25,000 threshold within a one-year period, the council desires to clearly articulate the policy consistent with enactment of ordinance 1-1-2-12A by the prior council, which that would have been in 2014, that the council will not authorize payment of claims for such contract absent it first being reviewed by the council to ensure compliance with such provision. So that was something that was passed a few years ago and it's kind of become relevant with claims tonight. Am I on point with that, Chris? This might.
Yes, your legal degree served you well.
Thank you.
Tonight.
So, I don't know, in, this is my first review of this and Counselor Chevlot and Counselor Chavis, I think all, and Counselor Giles, you all three were on the council at the time this was passed. You weren't on in 2016? Okay. What is your thoughts on reviewing these vouchers as we go forward tonight? Should we take a very deep dive and compare it to this ordinance or approve as submitted? Or other thoughts?
I think it's important and it's imperative that, you know, this, this is ordinance. We have to adhere by it, everybody does. There's no gray area and we need to make sure that unless there's an amendment or until there's an amendment to what has been voted on unanimously and agreed to, that we need to adhere to it. And I don't think that we've been, hmm, we haven't, we've let this slide.
Absolutely.
And letting it slide, and now with the awareness that we have done that, we need to stop. And we've been talking about this, actually, I've been talking about it, you've been talking about it for almost a year now.
Right.
And so now we've got, in order for us to, you know, we need to have the contracts brought before us, we need to review them and we need to approve them and we have no problems, council has paid every single voucher that has been brought before us. But we can't continue to just ignore the rule of law, which is disordinance. And that's my two cents.
I totally agree with Councilwoman Chavis 100% because it's really the truth. We have, we have been extremely sensitive to the vendors. I just want that to be kind of said on public record because, you know, there was a previous issue with the City of Lawrence that prior to us, you know, we wanted to change that. But I also understand, agree with her that this is the rule. We've made folks aware of this and our feelings and so, you know, it is what it is at this point. Hopefully, we can get a quick remedy to it and move forward, but I'm willing to not pay this voucher until the administration follows the ordinance.
Hey, Sean, isn't?
Go ahead, please.
You brought up the Ice Miller, isn't, yeah, isn't a part of that total was encumbered expenses that happened in the previous calendar year that just didn't, that just fell over into a new calendar year?
That is correct.
How much was that number? I can't remember off the top of my head.
I believe it was $3,000.
So it was, it would have still, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have negated this conversation then because we're over $25,000. Is that right?
Well, we're over, yeah, we're at $33,000 just in 2021 and the ordinance is for the last 12 months. So I didn't look at anything from July through December of 2020.
Okay, I thought Tyler's, I thought Tyler's response was a portion of that $33,000 was expenses that incurred in 2020 that weren't billed until '21.
The question that I had asked him there was, will we be in double billed? Because in, on the April claim, we had said all items through February 15th. And so I was wondering if that was a double billing from that December 2020 item? And he indicated it was separate from what we paid.
Okay.
Well, and Sean and Tom, the ordinance says 12-month or 12-month period, or calendar year or 12-month period. So the fact that it was from a previous calendar year.
Don't keep it to the 12 months.
Doesn't matter.
Right.
I understand, but this was, this was debatable seven years ago too, for that very reason that there was a law firm that billed into a new year that was part of a carryover. So I just want, I just.
Yeah, I wasn't around for that.
I just wanted to.
I was, I was, and I believe that was really different, you know, different. Like I want to pay carryovers because that carryover before did not, you know, deal with this contracting of how we paid the vouchers up to '25. But I was very, I was wanting to push for the carryover to be paid for and I want people to be paid and I want Ice Miller to get paid for their services. And so I don't want to do that, but, and you know, and let's be honest, 2014 is when it passed, obviously, '16. So I think all of the stakeholders in the City of Lawrence are fully aware of this amendment. I mean, some were on the prior council and we have folks that are on this council that was on it in '16. So I don't know if ignorance is any sort of debate when it comes to this ordinance. I meant to be frank, we're a small town here.
Well, and based on the comments that we've gotten, Counselor Denny, here's what I would say and the questions I've gotten from the council. If your expectation is that the administration will not fail to put things in writing to avoid this ordinance, break up the, a contract into pieces so that it doesn't hit a $25,000 threshold, I mean, the ordinance talks about the vendor. A vendor is the company, the entity that's asking to be paid. In my mind, it doesn't matter that you don't put it in writing, it doesn't matter that you've broken it up into multiple pieces. What have you paid this vendor in a 12-month period? I mean, that's, and so I think what I hear you all asking is just for good faith compliance with the intention of an ordinance that y'all didn't even write in the first place. And I don't think that's unreasonable. And I think you just need to put, A, I think you need to clearly articulate your expectations if you're in agreement and B, so that people have an opportunity to be put on notice and it's crystal clear to everybody. And if you can't get that, then maybe we need at some point to revisit the ordinance and make it clear. Because it isn't fair to vendors, it's not their job to comply with this ordinance.
And so the putting on notice has already happened multiple times and we even asked for updates. And we've done that pretty much on a, every other month or quarterly basis where we ask in our meeting if there are any over $25,000 contracts being considered. And so we've done that multiple times. And there seems to be, two or three are the only ones that ever keep getting brought up. But we know that there's more than two or three because when we go back and we review what we've paid, we have paid several vendors in a 12-month period over that $25,000 threshold. And so we want to do right by our vendors, but this, in my opinion, this standard, this law has got to be met before we can act in good faith and pay the voucher. So this, if the notice wasn't clear before, as a member of the Finance Committee, I want to just clearly articulate that. We can't continue as a council, it's very irresponsible on our part to continue to pay vouchers with the full knowledge that we have exceeded that $25,000. It is very irresponsible and it's reckless. And I'm going to stop and.
That's all right, though, thank you. Tonight's, this is part of the discussion, so it's important for us to get all our thoughts out. And I want to add another sort of caveat then, and Reed, what the expenditure for professional service says, which in, in the ordinance. So in the original ordinance in Section 3, it says, and quote, expenditure for professional services or to retain a consultant or other professional, unquote, is defined to mean a financial dispersment to an individual or corporate entity who is to be or has been retained by the City of Lawrence, Indiana as an independent contractor providing professional services. Examples include, but are not limited to, legal professionals, government affairs consultants, accountants and other financial, political or legal consultants. It explicitly does not include payments via payroll to city employees, contracts for products or expenditures for infrastructure projects. So we see some larger ones regarding streets within these vouchers which would fall outside of this. But there is one in here, and I've asked this kind of among us, so best one of Indiana provides some garage and repair service alignment services. And they're now over $25,000. There's no contract with them, it's just been on an ad needed basis and here we are in the middle of the year, we've exceeded $25,000. So if we think of that, this trend will probably hit $45,000 to $50,000 if we continue to use that service. So what, is that defined as professional service? It's not necessarily in an office, it's not consulting, but they are doing a, a service that the city has it, can't do and is contracted to do it or has asked to do it outside of the normal payroll, outside of our normal utilization of people that maintain our vehicles. So I think that also might be a question of what is professional? Is it simply legal and accounting or is it, is it others? And Chris, you're the attorney, so you might, if you could weigh in a little bit on that and then I would ask the council, do we need to further define that or leave it where it's currently at?
Yeah, I mean, at the state level, when you're talking about professional, you are talking about the examples that are in that statute. Most commonly, people think of attorneys, it can be architects, it can be accountants. You know, generally, and this is not at all intended to be like a sobbery thing, but generally people that need some kind of particular education or certification to do a job. That said, that, I will tell you, for what it's worth, and I am not an accountant, you know, I, I don't think it's a great idea to have the city doing services with.
I don't think it's a great idea to have the city doing services with no contract. And it doesn't have to be like lawyer, contract, contract, you know, you can have a QPA, you can, you know, there are different levels of complexity depending on the services that are provided and the amount of money that you're talking about in total. And that's set forth in state statute, but, you know, doing business in thousands of dollar amounts without any contractual parameters, in my personal opinion, is not advisable for any municipality or government entity or frankly, any business either.
Well, maybe...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would think then, maybe, apologize Counselor Giles for jumping in, maybe it's, it might be best for us to ask Baker Tilly to look into what that definition is and do the comparative with other cities of similar size. But obviously then the Ice Miller, going back to that conversation, that fits, I mean, directly within the ordinance and what the ordinance addresses. Please go ahead, Counselor Giles.
What might, you know, be needed here is some new language to see if, you know, we just had service agreements not to exceed, something of that language, I don't know, Chris, if that makes a difference, but to get into that bit. But my question to Chris that I was going to have is, what remedies do we have to enforce this sort of ordinance?
You know, I think there is a legal argument if a contract fits, certainly within those specific examples, you know, that it's not valid if it hasn't been approved and thus shouldn't be paid. And unfortunately, that is the harshness of what happens, you know, when a contract isn't valid, a city shouldn't pay it frankly. I am not suggesting, I haven't seen any of these deals, I'm not suggesting that I know of that occurring, but that's your remedy. And that seems awfully harsh when all you're asking for is information about how the dollars of the city are spent, which is your duty to review and make sure those tax dollars and dollars in your community are being...
So with this particular ordinance, if we find a contract or, you know, a vendor, because no contract, a vendor that has violated, meets the standard, has violated this, then we have all right to not pay this bill?
Until you see a contract.
Well, let's clarify, let's clarify, the vendor didn't violate it.
Right, the vendor didn't violate.
No, 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 no. I'm saying the vendor, if we find a vendor that meets the standard of the ordinance...
Yeah.
Then followed by the administration.
I think I can answer your question just by reading the first section here of the amended version from 2016. Section 1 says, "The council will not approve any claim for an expenditure for professional services without first receiving written verification from the city administration that the professional services..."
It proves...
"...to be paid are not at the time the claim submitted to council, expected to exceed $25,000 in aggregate per year or per 12-month period."
Yeah, and that is, it is common for councils to hold things, I'm not saying the vendor never gets paid, I'm saying you don't get paid until you have the paperwork in front of the council so they understand what the agreement is and what the scope of the work and the payment terms are. And that's, that's not unreasonable to hold that until you get it. And sometimes I recognize that these things happen quickly, needs happen quickly and you don't always have signatures in place and the paperwork in place. I can't remember, maybe somebody can help me. There was a contract that we did get a copy of after the fact that was created, you know, it was signed by the city after the work was already done. But, you know, that's not your ideal way to do it, but you guys asked the question and you got a contract that was signed, you know, a week before they gave it to you, after the work that was in the claim in the voucher had long been completed.
So you're proposing that this, that could be a remedy for this?
Yeah, yeah.
But, I'm just trying to go, I'm just in the statute, which you read, so right now, we have, we got this in our Finance Committee, we have the, under the statute not to pay this, this bill because it violates the ordinance clearly. So, and it's not the vendor's fault, but to whomever the task is to follow the ordinance for the bill to be presented to this council for payment. So if my only remedy is that, we've already had offline conversations, then I am willing to, I recommend to, to, I would like to make a motion to recommend to full council that this, that this particular invoice be pulled from the bills and not considered in today's what we paid the voucher.
Counselor Giles, before you make your motion, would you like to hear about just... From administration, I see Tyler, Controller is on the, on here with us at this point. Would that be fine for him to have, make some comments?
Yeah, I had checked, I had checked earlier, he wasn't anyone from the administration on earlier, so that's why I'm not aware, I apologize, but prior to making that statement, I didn't check, I didn't see anyone to ask questions to them.
Yeah, so let me, let me just throw it to our Controller then. Controller Tyler, or would anybody from the administration like to maybe address this or have some comments for us?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. No, I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with where you guys are coming from on this and I think we may want to just review amending the ordinance to clarify a couple of pieces. I do see in the original or the amended 14, 2014 ordinance, any expenditure for professional services or to retain a consultant and I think we need to maybe clarify that.
Were you reading 14 or 16? 14 or 16?
I'm looking at, I mean, 14 I think was in more detail than the resolution in 16. So when we were talking about Section 3, we were talking about the section in 2014.
Okay.
But just clarifying Section 1 of 2014, to me, it seems like we, I don't know, it's a weird wording, but I would think we should want to clarify, you know, retainage as a contract. I don't, to me, I'm not aware of a contract in place, but, you know, I could see these one-time uses start to add up with some of these professional service vendors, so, yeah, I think maybe clarifying that and if you guys want to pull this one this time and then we can get with Ice Miller and get this straightened out, you know, I see where you guys are coming from, so.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Controller, for jumping in and giving us that information.
So I also had, I think that it's clear that what's professional services in terms of the vouchers that are going to be in front of us this evening, I do think that the work that had been, was being done, what was the name of the vendor, Best?
Best One of Indy.
Yeah, Best One of Indy. I think that that might be a little gray, for me anyway, and I would really like to see us pay that voucher because I'm not sure that that really falls into, the dollar amount does, but I think that if we want those types of services to be covered, I think we should explicitly make sure that that's included and clarified. Because I don't think that, and Tom is on and he was on that council, but I don't think that that type of service was the intent of the ordinance.
You are, you are correct, Lisa.
I was gonna say, maybe Tom could clarify that, I had the same opinion on that one because I don't think a mechanic shop would clarify, but that's, that's more or less my point on clarifying retainage as an actual contract in place rather than these buildup of one-time expenditures that, you know, maybe we get to December and it hits 25,050 and it's kind of like, oh, we didn't really enter into an agreement to get that high, it's just these one-time uses built up and...
Yeah, but I do want to clarify...
The concern...
Go ahead, Tom, I'm sorry.
To your point, yeah, Lisa, a good, the concern, as I recall back six years ago, seven years ago, that I had was, how do you, how do you parallel this 25? Because for example, in a given 12-month period, we're probably spending that and more now with Verizon, with body cameras and cell phones or Vectren with utilities or all these other types of expenses that in aggregate will blow through $25,000 within a month or two. And so I think the spirit of it was specifically contracted services and that would be legal, like what we just had a great spirited conversation about with Ice Miller and Umba, when we used Umba to do certain rate review analysis, that was the intent, as I remember, about these contracts and so, but the other continued services piece of it, that key to operational, that was supposed to be removed from this or about these one-offs.
Yeah, and just Tyler, just to make sure that I was, I was clear, I mean, I certainly think that Ice Miller is within the purview of what we're talking about. I mean, we have done business with them for years and so we certainly know that every year we're going to go over 25,000. And, you know, we don't have any issue with that, as long as there's a contract, it's already been budgeted for, we'll sign off on it. I think we need to assume that if we are entering into a contract with an entity such as that and we know that they're being, their services are being used in multiple different ways, that, you know, that's going to be over 25,000 and we need to have a contract and we have historical data to show that, so we're not just, you know, stabbing in the dark on that one.
And I think to Tyler's question about the retainer, if I can make a comment, obviously, attorneys are on retainer, I'm on a monthly retainer. I believe Dan Zerner is also on a retainer for his economic development services and that is a monthly fee that is below 25,000. We have Dan's contract, I believe, that was when Jason gave us, so we've seen that one, but to the extent that's helpful, Tyler, I think that's kind of what that retain a consultant is talking about, a monthly fixed fee for somebody's services so you can call them whenever you need them, if that makes sense.
Yeah, in this case with Ice Miller, it's a weird, it's more of a unique because they were two different matters, so it is one vendor and I'm, so I'm not going to argue that, I'm just kind of, on a contract basis, I guess more, how would these legal contracts work for separate matters? Like one was for Corporation Council and then another one was for, was it...
Well, it's the vendor, so if you're paying Ice Miller, it doesn't really, or you're paying me, it doesn't matter what I'm working on or what they're working on and just for the record, all attorneys should get paid for their work, Ice Miller should get paid, I always say that, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it is the vendor at 2,500 in payment, it doesn't matter that it's different areas of work.
So just a clarifying question real quick, so if we did one where maybe we weren't doing a monthly retainer, but there was like an hourly, an agreed upon hourly rate that, you know, wasn't, wouldn't be intended to exceed 25,000, would you recommend to produce a contract with that hourly rate with a not to exceed 25,000 and then bring that to the council or should we?
I would say no, because that's below the threshold, Tyler.
Well, yeah, I think if you didn't have another Ice Miller contract that then pushed it over, I don't, I think the answer is no, but I do think that the ordinance also addresses what happens when you didn't think it was going to be 25 and it goes over, that's going to happen, right? And that's okay, that's nobody's fault, but when that happens, that triggers then a need to bring it to the council. So as long as you track that and are aware of it and when it happens, you bring it to the council, I would think it would not be an issue.
I would agree with that.
I would do.
I also would agree with that to the point that if you are at 15,000 in April, it's a service and you know you're using it at a rate, then you clearly know that you're going to go over 25,000. We also know, let's be honest here, we are all professionals and adults here, that when you start hiring Ice Miller Engineering firms, all those professional services to the mayor's office, man, it don't get too long before you get over 25,000, really, really, you know? So, you know, one of the issues, and I'm just going to be very frank, is I'm tired of playing cat and mouse and let's talk about a tent and let's move the city forward, we're all adults, we understand, we can read and comprehend, apply and go forward. If we're going to have to do things by the letter and play this gotcha game, that's not something that I'm interested in and I don't think anyone else in this county is interested in and we've displayed that over the last five years. We have watched this occur over and over and over and over again, but we were, we allowed it because we were, the city needed to move in a way to get us on a nice stable ground. The city is financially stable, we appreciate, I appreciate the administration and its coworker, you know, people that's worked for them to get it there. But now, we don't have the excuses that it took us two years to reconcile, three years to reconcile our books and all sorts of things. We have historical data and good financial stewardship, so the ship has a captain, but you've taken on a ship that has done well, we just would like for some housekeeping and we appreciate Tyler, your willingness and your openness to, to understand that this fits right in the fray of this deal and I really truly do appreciate that, but I unfortunately, my patience for has expired and I apologize to you for that.
Counselor Giles or in everyone, I think we just have a few minutes left to our main, our council as a whole meeting. So if you don't mind maybe holding your motion until the full council meeting and making it then, this was more for a discussion tonight and I appreciate everybody weighing in on what the word professional services meant, because these were, this was passed more than six years ago, is amended five years ago and bringing these discussions back, I think it was important just to flush out some of these terms, so everybody was back on the same page. So unless anyone has, well, just hold all your comments, I think for the next meeting, there's nothing left for us to discuss tonight, so I appreciate everybody and Tyler, I appreciate your comments, so thank you everyone and this will adjourn the Finance Committee tonight.